To our Chief Financial Officer, Tony Carlisle, who has done a yeoman's job of pulling all of this together. I also have to thank. I also have to thank the team in my office, Caroline Galvin, who is responsible for all that you see before you today. Your materials that you'll be taking home with you to cogitate on and ask us questions about. Kristen Byer Smith and Lynn Houseley, my Assistant City Managers, for all of their support during this process. And of course, our senior leadership team, who have worked so diligently over the last year to continue to serve our citizens in our community. Within your notebook today, you have a number of documents. You have the slides that we will be presenting today. Then in the front pocket, you have a ballot for your capital projects that we will walk through as we get further on our presentation materials. You also have a list of our capital planning assumptions behind the ballot. You have a list of our fleet planning assumptions. Those are the replacement vehicles for our various departments. You have a companion slide deck for the ballot items that are listed so that you can review those at your leisure. And then behind that, I'm very excited to present to you all today. Our first performance measures report based on council's adopted priorities that were adopted in February of this year. This extensive document shows you the progress that we are making on accomplishing council's adopted priorities. We will continue to update this on a quarterly basis and will get this information out on the web. But this is the very first time that we are presenting it publicly. I'm not going to read it to y'all today. I'd like for you to take it home and look at it at your leisure. I thought you would like that councilman. And let us know what questions you might have. So, everybody got your handouts?
Yep.
All right, here we go, guys, again. Just to recap our calendar and as a public process with our budget. But staff has already been working on your budget for three months. We started in February with our budget meetings and the implementation this year of a new budget tool, ClearGov, to help us better identify needs from our departments. That ended up with departmental budget meetings with finance and my office in April. And then from April to May, we sat down and reviewed all of the requests, came up and formulated what you see before you today. Today, we have budget workshop number one. In two weeks, we will have budget workshop number two. On May twenty-third, we will present the city manager's recommended budget. And at that time, you'll get the line out of detail that supports all of the items that you see here today. On June sixth will be the first public hearing and budget workshop number three. And on June twentieth will be the final public hearing and our budget adoption calendar. All of this, of course, is contingent upon council's desires moving forward with the budget process. All of you are very familiar with council's adopted priorities. Our process that we utilize in Sandy Springs is to establish our priorities early in the year. We typically start that at the council retreat each January. This year, council adopted our priorities on February seventh. At the core of everything that we do is customer service and citizen engagement. That's at the top of the list in your performance measures document. Followed by public safety, transportation accessibility and community appearance, recreation and cultural enrichment, economic development with a focus on redevelopment, sustainable growth and environmental stewardship, and water reliability. The purpose of today's meeting is to receive feedback and direction from city council as we continue the development of our FY twenty-four budget. We're going to review our budget planning assumptions, both operational and capital, and the requested enhancements from our departments. We will also talk through and provide better information to understand our public safety, general government services and facilities priorities as part of our longstanding service delivery and capital programs. We have for many years followed a priority-based budgeting model. Council adopted priorities and we validate those priorities each year, January and February. And that is utilized by the departments to formulate their budget requests that are submitted to finance in March of each year. We hold those budget hearings, as I've mentioned, in early April with the department heads to review both their current year budget projections, how they are with their spending, what we anticipate they're going to spend through the end of the current fiscal year, and then also their requested enhancements. Ultimately, and I can't stress this enough, all requests have to be tied to council's adopted priorities. Otherwise, it is not included in the budget that is presented to you. We believe very strongly in identifying these assumptions very early and validating them very early in our budget process. For our capital improvement project budgeting, this is also based on the priorities that are validated during our retreat. We have a variety of means of getting projects, both as assumptions and ballots. They can be recommended during the year by members of council, by the public, or they could be brought up by staff as part of our annual and ongoing review process. They are all vetted by staff before placing either on the assumptions or on the ballot list. And the ballot is given to the council and the mayor during the first budget workshop. You have it in your materials today. Council and the mayor are asked to rank these items that are on the ballot, one through twelve, I believe in this case. And we are requesting that you return your ballots to us by next Tuesday, May midnight, Caroline Galvin and my office. Caroline will then go through, average the scores from your rankings, and we will apply the dollars on the ballot until the funds have run out. We'll talk through the ballot in additional information, in additional detail as we get further. Any questions before we talk about assumptions? Okay. We are projecting modest organic revenue growth this year. I'm happy to report that we do have some growth that we're projecting. Property tax, after Fulton County did the property tax reassessment last year and we've completed the appeals process, we are anticipating additional funding. However, we are already starting to see a decrease in collections on local option sales tax. As we've all heard from the economic troubles that we are seeing with inflation, there is a downturn in spending. It is not enough that I am reducing the amount that we are projected to receive at loss this year. We are actually going to receive more than we received last year. Because as you will recall, with the loss negotiations that we had ongoing, we very conservatively budgeted the amount of anticipated revenue under local option sales tax last year at twenty-six and a half million. We're on track this year to collect a little less than thirty million. So we're looking to put that number this year around twenty-eight million. Again, you'll see those specific numbers as we get further in the budget process. We are continuing to prioritize our recruitment and retention efforts across the city, public safety and our general government services provision. We are including in our budget a six percent cost of living adjustment for all city employees. That is a total impact to the budget of two point two million dollars in all of our funds. I'm also proposing that we fully absorb the eleven percent health insurance increase that we are projecting. We will not be increasing employee premiums because we did not want to give employees a pay raise and then take away some of that money to pay for their share of employee healthcare. We are committed to remaining the market leader. Council has made it very clearly known to me that we are going to be the best paid in the region. And this will ensure that we remain in that position. We also are anticipating a twelve percent increase in our general liability insurance. Those numbers have been included in these budget assumptions. We are adding twelve additional full-time staff this year, ten in the general fund. And I just realized that should be eleven additional full-time staff and one in the Performing Arts Center. We've had so many changes and adjustments to the budget materials up until about an hour ago. We are also fully funding the annual subcontractor agreements for key public safety services. Our twenty-four-seven call center, Public Works, as you all know, they were rebid this last year, and also Recreation Parks Maintenance. This budget also includes our debt service for our public facilities authority, both for this campus, City Springs, and the police headquarters and municipal court complex and fire apparatus. Our debt service for next year is twelve point six million dollars. There's that detail on our debt service number for next year, twelve million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand and three hundred and eight dollars. We've also included our contract with FANUAL for our call center. That includes the required contractually obligated escalator to them. The North Fulton Regional Radio Authority is seeking an increase this year in the share that we are being asked to provide by three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That'll put our contribution at nine seventy-five. The reason for that is that they are beginning to build up the funds that are going to be necessary to replace the dispatch consoles and the repeaters in twenty-twenty-seven when they come to end of life. This version was more acceptable, other than us having to come up with a million, one point two million dollars in twenty-twenty-seven to pay for that. We also have continued service agreements with our community nonprofits at seven hundred thousand. I will walk you through the detail of those numbers as we get further in our presentation today. I talked to you earlier about the cost of living adjustment for city employees. There is the eleven percent increase for our health insurance at one point six million. Animal control agreement, we currently are paying a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. But Fulton County notified us last December when we extended that agreement for another year of their intent to renegotiate our animal control agreement this year. This is an estimate based off of what information we have now, so that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars may change. It also includes debt service for our fire trucks at sixty-two thousand. We are also projecting an increase in the cost of housing inmates through Smyrna and Pickens. I have a meeting next week with Chief D. Simone and folks from Smyrna to talk about their needs and what they will be requesting. That's why that has an asterisk at this time. We don't know when that number will be. Our Public Works subcontractor agreements are at five point three billion, Recreation and Parks agreements at eight hundred and forty thousand. We are also currently in negotiations with the landlord for the buildings that used to be City Hall and currently house police and municipal court. I, at this point, do not know the exact dollar amount, but I will have more information early next week from them on that number. And then finally, the continued EMS subsidy with AMR to ensure that we have eight-minute or less response time for MS calls in Sandy Springs. I would like to point out to you that that number will likely change in FY twenty-five. I just want to let you all know that there are some looming changes and cost increases that will impact our subsidy going forward. Any questions on assumptions? Yes, sir?
Can you break down, do you have the breakdown of principles and interest on the PFA bonds?
Yes, Tony can pull that for you. The majority of it, I believe, is still interest because of.
Like, we are. Okay, move on.
Okay. Anybody else?
A quick one, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
So what did we pay last year in North Fulton Regional Radio Authority operations? That seems like a high number.
It was six hundred and twenty-four thousand, I believe, last year. The additional amount of money they're asking for this year is because they're trying to build up the cash to buy Repago, the new dispatch console and repeater when they are at the life in twenty-seven.
I said, all right, about three hundred and something thousand more dollars this year and for next year?
Yes, sir. That is exactly right.
Did you say those are one point two million dollars for, oh, what's going to be required?
That would be our share in twenty-seven if we were not paying the three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
What's the total cost of those things?
I'll have to get that for you. I don't remember that off the top of my head.
Well, let's split them on four cities?
It is, yes, sir.
We're talking about four plus million dollars to upgrade this stuff?
I can send you all that detail. I have it.
Okay. Thank you. It's to be done.
All right, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
And the increase in jail services and the increased rent, is the rent that's already there? You're just talking about the increase.
I will be, yes. Once I have that number.
Are we using any of the full, was, which is the one that says there's so much attack these days is Glen or Fulton County? Fulton County. We don't use their services to.
Not per city ordinance violations or misdemeanor charges. Those would be felonies or post-adjudication before they go to the state facility.
So you're mixing, some of these are fixed numbers and some of these are increases?
Correct. So the animal control agreement could be the total number, but at this point, I don't know what that number is going to be.
Right, but.
But we don't have anything in jail services on here, right?
No, we don't right now.
So should we put any number in there and the, and in the rent? Is that part of our budget?
It is in our base budget, and I can get you those numbers to.
There's not a lot you can discern from this chart. Because some of them are, like the twelve million PFAs, that's the number for next year, right? Right, but, but on the other hand, the call for city employees, that's just the increase.
That's just the.
Yeah, there's, there's not a whole lot you can discern from this chart, other than each individual item.
And you'll have better numbers on these next meeting.
We'll have the line out of detail on the twenty-third.
I'm saying, but you'll have the number for the increase in jail services.
I'll have the answers to your questions, yes, sir.
Okay, right, but to go back, th- this total is kind of meaningless right now. But just, which is fine. I, I guess, at some point, tell us what the increases are over prior years.
Absolutely. We'll tease those out for you.
Okay.
The, the reason for showing it this way is because these are an operating assumption out of your general fund. That total amount is to go towards these, but we'll tease out what the base is and what the additional is for your next meeting.
Go ahead.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I'm going to invite Chief D. Simone up to review the police department's request and progress here today.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council and colleagues. Real quickly, just go over the statistics from twenty-twenty-two. Violent crime was down twenty-two percent, which is good to hear. Property crime, a small decrease, two percent from twenty-twenty-one. Our crashes, that's our wrecks, about the same, only one percent decrease, over five thousand, five hundred wrecks. I did the math on that. That's fifteen wrecks a day, and some of those are more than two vehicles. So we have quite a number of traffic crashes in the city. We wrote in twenty-twenty-two, over twenty thousand traffic tickets or warnings. And that's a slight decrease from twenty-twenty-one. Calls for service, good news here, calls for service since twenty-fifteen has a decrease of fourteen point two five percent. And the reason that is, is what you all did is the alarm ordinance. The alarm ordinance, I just talked to Captain Abel yesterday, has reduced the number of false calls into nine-one-one by eighteen percent. So that's, that's a huge number. And if other police departments in the metro would follow this, I mean, some departments are up to twenty-five percent understaffed. If they could cut out eighteen percent of their calls, it would really help them out. So I thank you all for passing that alarm ordinance years ago because we saw, seen a steady decrease in the calls for service. Activity, here are some of our numbers. Everything stayed about the same. One big incident there, numbers are, are SWAT callouts. Twenty-twenty-one, we had eighteen, and last year we fell to eight. Of course, that involves the four cities, the North Metro, Sly. Quick response force deployments, zero for both twenty-one and twenty-two. That will go up this year. We've been requested several times by the city of Atlanta. Some of these seizures for narcotics, pretty good, over quarter million dollar seize. Now, this is just our narcotics unit, doesn't include our federal task forces that we're on with the DEA, FBI, ATF. Traffic unit, our fatalities, they're staying about the same, about a half day, dozen a year. That is down from earlier though, twenty and nineteen, where we're averaging about one a month. So we've cut it in half and hopefully we can keep it about that. Our TRVs, now we have two trucks in service to cover more of the rush hour, morning and evening. And they're out there quite busy.
Looks like we've had a number of potholes on two eighty-five to flat tire changes.
And that, potholes and construction debris, rebar, things falling off these construction trucks, metal, and it does cause a lot of flat tires. We go through a lot of tires. I know I've placed, replaced on my vehicle alone, I think, four last year.
Chief, so explain a bit why self-initiated calls are twice as much. This is, we've decided to go make a call?
We've added another truck in the service. So we've doubled, we have a TRV one and two, and they're, they're running full times.
But you call them self-initiated? What is that? How do you explain that? What does that mean?
That means the TRV is driving down the interstate and he sees a car broken down on the side of the road. Nobody's called it in. It's self-initiated. It's not a nine-one-one call for service. And since we have two trucks out there covering more hours, your self-initiation is going to go up. They see things before it's called in by anybody. That's, that's what a self-initiated call is. A call for service can be somebody calls nine-one-one, or somebody comes out and says, hey, I need cops. They see a marked car. And self-initiated is you see something and you're like, man, put me out on this. I've got something.
Do we charge people for any of this stuff?
No, sir.
On this self, on these traffic responses?
No.
Not even gasoline?
No. But as the cost of gasoline goes up, we may want to.
Yeah. Especially when, especially when we're doing two hundred and fifty gallons.
Yeah. But it gets the vehicles off the road.
Well, that's true.
For fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, the requested enhancements, city manager talked about it earlier. There's been an, an increase request for rent for buildings three hundred and four hundred. There are police headquarters is now, potential increase in jail costs. We will be going to Smyrna next week. Luckily, we have inside with the police chief over there. So hopefully he'll give us some good bargaining, chief's to God's. Bill Tasking Kits, that's for drugs, especially fentanyl. You'll have a briefing tonight from DEA on fentanyl. And if it gets expensive, and technology improvements, that's anywhere from Lab nine-one-one, our flock cameras, our Axon equipment, including body cameras, FUSES, which is a real-time crime center program that we'd like to implement. And we're going to have to replace a canine dog, and then expensive item is the portable radios. They come to end of life and have to be replaced. And also, we would like to increase the department by one major, two officers, and one's the property evidence manager. We have an officer in there now. She's getting ready to retire. Would like to stay with the department. And she'd be a perfect fit for that. Currently, we have two officers in there. If we could civilianize that position, it would help us and put a swarm of personnel on the street.
Chief, talk to us a little about Lab nine-one-one. What's that about?
Lab nine-one-one is a system. It goes on the laptop in the patrol cars. And when a nine-one-one call comes in, it like geo-fences your location and the officer in the car can hear the dispatcher talking to the person that's calling in nine-one-one. So if you're driving around and there's a, say, a shoplifting at a gas station, and that's your beat, it will actually let you listen to the caller and the dispatcher. And while she's typing the information out, say suspect information, you can listen to it while you're driving there. You don't have to read anything. And when you get there, before it's put into the system, you can be aware of what's going on with that particular call, calls going now. It's just, just new technology. Brookhaven has it already. They have a server up at Chatcom, and we're just sort of jumping on some of their technology that they bought some backbone for. And the other cities will do it as well. They sort of had it in a best beta testing, and it seems to work pretty good. The officers like it. You know, just give them a few more minutes of situational awareness before you get to a call.
This is all nine-one-one calls?
Nine-one-one calls that are in that area where there's an officer with that equipment on their laptop.
This is our.
Chief, one more. So this construction at two eighty-five and four hundred is supposedly coming to, coming to an end here pretty quick. So how does that going to affect any of this? Have you figured that into this, or are you just assuming things, that trends are going to continue? Because it is going to change things when everything's done, right?
It, it will. If, like anything else, there will always be traffic. It just depends at what speed they're at. Maybe the more serious injuries, fatal injuries may go up because traffic is now back to speed. And like, I think I sent an email not too long ago to mayor and council. On the weekends is when we have the really bad wrecks because there's not as much traffic out there. People are driving faster. During the week, we have more wrecks. But various, you know, the serious and fatal wrecks are almost non-existent because everybody's driving way below the speed limit because of the volume of traffic. So there will always be traffic out there. It's just how it moves, where people are going. And it, it's always going to be a concern for Sandy Springs because we have that at one of the ten busiest intersections in America. At two eighty-five and four hundred, I think GDOT estimates every twenty-four hours, a half million vehicles pass through that intersection.
Chief, with the jail cost, do we house anybody that is set to appear in Fulton County, or is it only for our courts? So what I'm driving at is the backlog that is occurring in Fulton County affecting our jail cost times.
No, the backlog for Fulton County courts are housed in the Fulton County Jail.
Okay.
There are fellowings.
Right. Okay, so the only people we're housing are.
City courts.
That would be appearing city court. It's full-time?
Do we have something kind of fix-it violations where people can pay for their violations online?
They can pay online? Justin, that's probably a better question for you.
They can pay some citations online, and there are some cases where they are, must appear in court. It certainly depends on the citation and the seriousness of it.
Do we, do you know if we use something called fix-it violations or something?
No, but we do have an online portal through our city website.
Mr. Julio?
Ken, how many of, of, are all these full-time officers sworn, or how many are sworn? How many actually sworn officers do we have right now?
One hundred and forty-seven.
One hundred and forty-seven?
Full-time sworn.
And we're full?
No, we are not. We're down eight officers, eight full-time sworn officers right now.
Really? That much? Because I thought we were just down one a couple of months ago.
We were. Six months ago, we were down one.
Yeah, well, we did, we did our retreat where I think we were only down one in February.
Yeah.
One of the challenges is we're, corporations are hiring some of our officers to go into corporate security and.
Oh, absolutely. And we'll lose them full-time, but we keep them in the reserve program. We just had Sergeant Lacy, he went to AIG Insurance Company, still a member of the police department, but only in a reserve capacity. And.
Is that under the part-time?
No, that's reserved. There's three types of officers, full-time, part-time, and reserve. Full-time, obviously, what it means, part-time, they get paid. Part-time, reserved, they don't get any pay, but they have to do a minimum of ten hours a month volunteer for the police department.
So where will we be next year with respect to the headquarters project? Will that be done?
Hopefully, third quarter, I mean, fourth quarter of twenty-four, it'll be getting close.
Okay.
My day, yeah, fourth quarter twenty-four. Right there, yeah, fourth quarter, twenty-four.
Do you, do you anticipate that project impacting your operating budget significantly?
I don't think so. One thing it will knock out is you see they keep increasing our rent. So now we're no longer renters, we're owners and we don't, we're not subject to what the landlord wants to do.
We're kind of done paying right now because we're paying the debt service on bonds and we're paying rent. At least the rent portion of that will go away when we move in.
Right now, I believe we're paying forty thousand dollars a month in rent for a building three hundred and four hundred.
I know last year we talked a lot about there being supply chain issues. How are we?
Good question. There, there still are. Dave, this probably.
The project, we've ordered a lot for a long lead. So we're, I think we're in good shape and we'll find out one.
And what about your own capital needs?
We're good for what we've asked for that, but. That was the first that brings up a good question. Vehicles, we're, we're having a hard time sourcing vehicles. I mean, I think everybody is.
I thought that was over.
I'm sorry. It's hard to get, there's a long lead time on vehicles and a long lead time for. Equipment that goes in vehicle, blue lights, cages, and a long lead time for people to install the equipment in the police vehicles. So we get it hit three, three ways.
How long does it take any per car?
Months.
Months?
Months.
Are we short any vehicles now or they're just getting older?
They're getting older. The very first vehicle I had when I came here in January of two thousand nine is still running and still. Hundred forty thousand mile. It's still, still running. We still use it as a spare car, but it's still in the lane to sell today.
We get our order in as quickly as possible each year to try to get things delivered.
Trying to find parts to repair is an issue. My son had blew an engine. It was covered under warranty. I took him from November to February. Early March to get an engine put in his car. It's just everywhere in the vehicle area.
Every year.
For the fiscal year that we're in, there was a mention, well, last year there was a mention of upgrading your CSI equipment and technology. How's that been going or?
That's going well. We've got a strong partnership with the Secret Service and they give us a lot of CSI equipment. And the CSI, a lot is electronics now, and that's sort of their forte. And we've got a strong partnership with them and basically federal grants that they give us with the partnership to. Help buy, purchase this equipment. As a matter of fact, they offered me to go to a course up there. It's pretty hard to get into. In a couple of weeks, week long about their mission in Washington DC fully funded because of our good working relationship we have with Secret Service. And that's just one, one agency, but that's. One that's fit with CSI. Great.
Okay.
You're doing good work. Thank you.
Next up is going to be Chief Sanders, but while he's coming up, Tony, I want to answer to Councilman Valma's question about the interest in principal. The total amount budgeted for FY twenty-four, the principal is seven million five hundred and ten thousand dollars. And the interest portion is five million one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred eighteen dollars. That's a twelve million six twenty-three, three eighteen.
Good. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Great news is Station Five began clearing yesterday to contract reduce. That's good thing in the door. Okay, so looking over our annual call volume for two thousand twenty-two. There has been a decrease. One thing to keep in mind here is that. Our change of response to non-emergency EMS calls, we have a BLS response by the ambulance service that takes over that. Those non-emergency calls and that's, that's major reduction, two, twenty-one to twenty-two. Our fire responses to EMS calls have decreased a little bit and then our false alarms are the black in black. Notice this is our response time. This is what I call our total customer service response time. This data comes from Chatcom. Our nine one one center, this is the time the call comes in, the time apparatus get on the scene of emergency calls. It's not non-emergency, but emergency. The anomaly in twenty and twenty-one was COVID when we had less traffic. And we did have a reduction in calls, slight reduction in calls during that time of emergency calls. A lot of people just afraid to go to the hospital and they waited to the last minute to go. So that's the reason why you see that reduction. Twenty twenty-two, this is our station responses, Station fifty-three and fifty-four. If you do recall, Station fifty-four, which is inside the city of Atlanta. We run at least ten to fifteen to one calls in Atlanta than we do in Sandy Springs. That unit is runs a lot down into that side. Its location does impact the, the call. Time or response or mercy calls into the city limits. Station fifty-three, one thing that we have noticed fifty-three and fifty-two. Is the significant numbers Chief D. Simone spoke of wrecks. We have a number of wrecks on the two eighty-five, four hundred. These collector distributor lanes now are very challenging to get to. We just had a car fire less past week that required engine fifty-two out of Station Two here. To travel all the way into Dunwoody to go to Shambly Dunwoody to come back down to get to the fire. So it does, those type of calls do impact our response.
Chief, do you have that number of calls per station as well somewhere?
I can break that down for you and provide that to you.
That'd be true, Ken.
Our cardiac arrest, keep in mind with this number here, we, we begin to track some years back. On and focus our training and, and training bystanders in CPR. You notice there was nineteen incidences where CPR was in process, progress and we had six survivors out of nineteen. That's a good number. If you notice the ninety-four, this is all inclusive of every call that we responded to where. Heartbeat had stopped where this may have been a rival on the scene. It was a death investigation. So we, we, we track all those numbers. We had a total of ninety-four incidences in the city in twenty twenty-two where. You know, someone's heart was not breathing, they, they were not breathing, heart was not beating. But out of nineteen of those calls where CPR was in, in progress, six of them were saved. Three, three, where there was no signal or in progress. So we are seeing a positive change with the number of people who are able to train in CPR. We did have a lull during COVID where we were not giving those classes out because of contact with folks. Now we've really picked that up in our community development program to, excuse me, community outreach program to teach more of the CPR classes. We have historically, well, since I've been here, we've, we've taken a historical look at our call volume citywide. Breaking it down into heat maps, one of the accolades to. To Bridget and her team and GIS, they do a tremendous job in helping us really trying to track overall the number of calls. When you look at fire incidents alone, this would be anywhere mainly structure fires, vehicle fires, dumpster fires. We have very few woods fires, but we do have a, a number of the, the others I've just mentioned. And in twenty twenty-one, this is where they're plotted throughout the city. Twenty twenty-two, we went from two oh one to two thirteen. And, and, and consistently since we implemented the apartment ordinance program of, of, of really fire prevention. We saw a, a trend trending down after two thousand and seventeen and we've continued to see that. And now it's, it's kind of leveling off to around two hundred, two hundred and twenty calls a year on fire incidents. EMS is our big response factor. If you'll notice where the heat maps are, we, this is where we consistently run our, our EMS calls. And these are emergency calls. And these are the EMS incidences in twenty twenty-two. Twenty-one, we had four thousand seven hundred sixty-four responses by the fire department and in twenty twenty-two. There's five, four thousand five hundred and ninety. There's a separate set of calls that. The ambulance service responds to these, they respond also to a lot of non-emergency calls as well. And then the, the hotspots of other incidences, this is other than fire and EMS, we had nine thousand four hundred thirty-eight calls in twenty twenty-one. And you'll notice there once again, twenty twenty-two, we had eight thousand sixty. So we had a decrease. In the other additional calls that we responded to the city fire department did. Once again, you see where the hotspots are. These would include your MVAs as well. You notice where they are. Especially along. Four hundred and Peachtree Dunwoody. And then the total incidences for twenty-one, this is all inclusive of the fourteen thousand four hundred and three calls. You'll see where they're scattered throughout the city. You notice up here, we'll be able to finally take off. Fifty-five station engine, fifty-five currently is housed in Roswell, Station Seven outside, but that is the future home. Of, of, of the apparatus there at the corner of Mount Vernon and Spalding. It's the twenty twenty-two all incidences. And the fire department requests this year for enhancements. We are, Imani in the emergency management is working on identifying us some shelter. Shelter locations throughout the city, working with Fulton County Emergency Management as well. So we can have those pre-planned in areas of our city. Supplying some supplies that we need for these heating and cooling centers in the summertime. Sometimes you've had to ask, we've had extreme heat. And then also have preparation for the winter as well. We've got a number of, currently we, we use what's called a Panasonic tough book in all of our apparatus. And our fleet is very costly. We work with Jonathan and his team and IT to look at the iPads. This is a trending change, best practices that a lot of the other agencies, the metro Atlanta area are trending to. A lot less expensive, a lot more user friendly to go to the iPads. We're transitioning to that. The VFIS insurance is a benefit of the city fire department. Jack McPhish implemented this in the city at the city's inception. We've always maintained this is a benefit to the firefighters if they're injured in line of duty. It's an alternate benefit that they have and city manager has regularly continued to fund that each year, seventy thousand this year. The, the, we have a, the defibrillators, this is an ongoing cost that we have for those who should be receiving new ones this year. DTN is also emergency management alert program that'll be able to be on key city leaders' phones. Where we don't have to wait on that alert from emergency management or GMA. We can actually get it ourselves through this technology. And we'll have that available as well this upcoming year. I'm asking for two additional firefighter paramedics on, on. One, one for each shift and, and this will help us to, one thing that we have trended out over the years and shown that we consistently have. Vacancies because of workers' compensation out on FMLA. And it's a constant strain. We have minimum staffing that we have to maintain by having these additional personnel on this. On the shift that is able to maintain, allowing our personnel to take their time off and also maintaining our minimum staff. As of today and over the last ninety days, we've, we've been full staff. And so we're, we're very excited that we've have, have a. Full staff in the fire department and motivation is high, morale is high among the folks. The fire inspector, we're asking for additional fire inspector. We are just, Fire Marshal's office is really, really inundated with annual inspections. Every building you see in Sandy Springs has to be touched annually to do those inspections. This also, every apartment complex, we have two people that are dedicated to the apartment complexes. There's ninety-six apartment complexes. Every, every one of them, the citations have really exceeded, accelerated over the last year. In, in, in enforcing fire safety. Regulations and things that need to be ensured that we have there and that the ordinances are mandated and maintained. Capital request, we're at, requests we're asking for, we, we annually have to replace out aging equipment. Hose, hose is tested annually, but it, it has an end of life. The fire helmets have a ten-year end of life as well. And then also the turnout gears, you see there, we have, each firefighter has two sets. So we constantly have to change that out and we are on a, a ten-year replacement schedule, but we also have to have additional funding in there. The Lucas, since the device is, we're upgrading, we did, we began this last year, we're upgrading the Lucas device. It is a CPR main, it's mechanical device that we use during the cardiac arrest. That puts the mechanical device in operation instead of the hands on chest compressions.
I thought we already had those.
Well, we do, but we have to, we're replacing them. We didn't got all of them at one time. We're replacing them over a few year period. And then the fire station four, this is the station on Waiauca, it's, it's an aging facility. And the, the, the kitchen needs to be remodeled. It's worn out. We have cabinets that are. Doors off cabinets. We, we need an upgrade there and an updated and a question for the funds to be able to do that down there. And the decon washers, you saw these at Station Two when we did our tours there. This is where it actually sterilizes and cleans the air packs and the air bottles, the helmets. Requesting that to be put in the Station One, Three and Four, and there will be one installed in the new Station Five. And then finally, the generator for the mobile, for our mobile centers. One thing that we learned during COVID, we just need the preparation to be ready. We have a trailer. We just need a generator that we can put in there. So that we can bring power supply wherever we may have to set up a pod in the future. Point of distribution, should we have another pendant, we just need to be prepared for that. Finally, our staffing full time is one hundred seventeen with a new request raises to one hundred twenty-one. Then we have four part-times. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
How many fire inspectors and how many paramedics do we have right now?
I can get you the total number of our paramedics. I'll break that down for you at our next meeting. We have a paramedic, at least one paramedic on every truck apparatus, every shift. All of our trucks are advanced life support. So we have all the drugs, the cardiac equipment, everything on those trucks. But I can get you the total number we have as far as EMTs versus paramedics. There is a difference in their scope of work and their ability they have with intervention. As far as our Fire Marshal's office today, we've had seven in, in the Fire Marshal's office. There's nothing, probably eight.
And I have a follow-up question. As far as paramedic and what, what, when does. Is an ambulance called and then a paramedic called? What are the differences?
I think they're called at the same time. Here, here's the, when, when our pyramid, there, there's times when our trucks get on the scene before the ambulance does. And we need immediate intervention, whether that be dealing with a diabetic coma, whether we're dealing with cardiac arrest. Drug overdose, but the paramedics can, can, can do what's called innovation. They can tube the patient so they can brief them. Regular EMTs cannot use the same type of equipment that they can. They can do intravenous. Certain drugs that regular EMT, EMT advanced can't provide, you know, can't give any type of drugs to the patient. And unlike the paramedic, they can do basically everything a nurse can do and even have more authority than a nurse because. They're really the doctor on the scene, working under our medical director's protocols that we have. And as long as they operate underneath that umbrella of those protocols, then they're fine. But it's, you know. You know, sometimes we have a delay in an ambulance on the scene, they're able to maintain that patient. Yes.
How many defibrillators does ninety thousand dollars buy?
I will get you the clarification. Can I get you the clarification on that?
Sure. Just curious.
The breakdown of that?
And then how many do we have? I guess sometimes, how many do we have and then?
We have one on every apparatus.
On every apparatus.
That's correct. And, and the battalion car, I have what's called an AED in my. That's correct, and, and the battalion car, I have what's called an AED in my car, police officers have the AEDs in their car. These defibrillators are for, uh, to, to provide the shock as well as, uh, the, the, the new defibrillators that we are, that we have bought. Uh, and waiting on the delivery of the, those defibrillators are actually the ones that will actually communicate directly to the hospital as well. The, the, the doctor can actually see, uh, the EKG is being produced there on the same. Any other questions? Thank you.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, what do you anticipate? Be the, um, I guess the impact of the new fire station, the one that's in progress right now? Do you expect to see a decrease?
I think we'll see a significant increase in our, uh, decrease in our response time.
Okay, and your average response times, that's for, um, EMS as well?
That's total, that's.
Yeah, that's definitely, okay, oh, also, um. How much, or do you have an idea of how much? Money the fire department spends on our kid?
If I can get that information.
Right, thank you. Okay.
Alright. Okay, next up, we're gonna dive into our operating departments. This year, uh, hearing your feedback from last year's budget workshop, we're not going through the performance measures, because you just heard that at our council retreat. You do have the document in your notebooks for you to take home. But we're gonna walk through the enhancements that have been requested by the departments as well as any capital requests. So first up, following along with our budget is information technology. This year, funds are requested for a cyber attack executive tabletop training. Every day, we are doing our best to stay on top of our cybersecurity needs. I'm sure that many of you see some of the stories and it's our goal that we are never on one of those stories for a cyber attack or for loss of personal data. We also have a request for one additional network administrator, this will be a network administrator for our traffic management center. Uh, that is a highly complex information network. And we believe very strongly that that is a critical position to ensure the overall network safety of not only the TMC. But also for our overarching city network, because it is tied back to it. We're also requesting an additional GIS analyst. On the capital side, funding is requested to replace servers and network switches that are ending their end of life, nearing their end of life. And the expiration of their warranty, that is, uh, the four hundred seventeen thousand dollar request there. And then workstation replacements and upgrades, again, that is those devices that are near the end of life and expiration of their warranty where no, no one would be supported.
Ian?
Yes, sir.
With, uh, infrastructure hardware replacement, you said when they're getting towards end of warranty. And we're spending four hundred thousand dollars to replace it, what do we do with the old equipment, do we trade it in, do we sell it, do we?
Jonathan is right behind you, usually we surplus it, but Jonathan, if you would.
Uh, typically servers are surplus, because by the time we are done with them, they don't have the value.
They have no value at all.
We sell them on, um, go fields, but they typically bring in just a couple thousand, that goes back.
How long do they last?
Uh, servers of the last five years, five to seven that they're on warranty to get with them.
So we keep as long as they're in warranty?
Yes, and we extend the warranty usually until we can extend further, at which point we're there.
Okay. Moving on to human resources, uh, we discussed during our council retreat this year, funding for project management training for our project managers and our senior leadership team. Jennifer has worked with good folks at Georgia Tech to pull together a training program that would culminate in the participants sitting for the EMP exam. That is requested as enhancement at fifty three oh oh five. ADP, we are also. Thousand five hundred dollars to have a connection between our benefits provider, which is Cigna, and our payroll. Annual linking process, and this will reduce some of the, or the potential for errors that could happen with the processing of benefit payments and payroll for our employees. Next is facilities. Within facilities, there are a number of requests for enhancements, first up is parking deck improvements at sixty seven thousand. That includes a upgrade in our license plate reader system. I thought you would like that one, Council. You ready?
Couldn't get in again today.
I told Dave last year very early, I said, find out how much it costs, I want a system that is going to work, because it happens to me as well.
Yeah, but it's been, what, five years now?
Yeah.
I can't get in and out of the building.
So that is, you see in facilities, our number one item. We are also looking for some ADA door modifications for the main entrance off of P one into the city hall area. Fortunately, when the facility was built, we did not put the push button ADA door operators there, and this will retrofit to add that function there.
There is one coming in the main.
But there is there, but not from the parking deck, when you're on P one, coming in right there, yeah. We also have a hundred thousand dollars included for hardscape repairs here at City Springs. I don't know if any of y'all have walked around the campus lately, I walk this route two to three times a week with my dogs. And there is a sinking area right here outside the fountains, so we're gonna have to pull the bricks and pavers up, figure out what's happening there and make that repair. We have a couple of other areas that are in need of some fixes. Machinery and equipment, we're looking to replace the forklift at Trobridge, which we bought, hey, was that two thousand twelve?
That was off the warehouse, a huge forklift.
Yeah, it has been well loved and abused and it's time to replace it, it is, uh, on its last legs. And we're also looking for two gas powered utility carts to help with servicing this campus and as we extend City Springs space too. We also have some site improvements for the Williams Payne House, that includes eighty thousand dollars for lower level renovations. For weddings and other rental functions that could occur down there, and then twenty five thousand dollars to fix the terrace outside of that lower level. On the capital side, facilities is including two hundred thousand dollars for demolition and preparation. Of our parcels that are currently under evaluation for City Springs space two, we do have to demolish the structures that are there. We also have the City Green artificial turf installation, that would be for both the main City Green and what I call the serpentine area out here behind the pop up. That would transition us over completely to artificial turf. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for essentially a pole barn at Trobridge for police to be able to store. Their QRF and other vehicles that if they sit out in the elements, they're simply deteriorating. We've invested a lot of money in those assets, we want to be able to protect them and extend their usable life as long as possible. Utilizing our robust facility condition assessment that was completed shortly after this campus came online. We've identified three hundred and fifty four thousand dollars worth of facilities maintenance that has to be done this year. In addition, we also have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Heritage Lawn, this is where the original Sandy Springs is. And we're playing, coming up with a design and a renovation plan so that we can really spotlight and showcase our original springs. And return that meadow to a usable function. We've had so many issues with water in the area now that there are parts of it that are so soggy, you simply cannot walk through them. And then finally, we have a planning assumption in the capital budget of two million dollars for our partnership with the Georgia Commission on the Holocaust. This is partial funding, there would be additional funding that would be necessary in subsequent budget years. But that would be the next step of that process as council continues those discussions. Any questions on facilities? Yes, ma'am.
Um, what are some of the examples of the Payne House improvements that we'll be making?
Dave, would you like to talk through that?
Yes, so, um, the restrooms, our original restroom down there, they're the final grade, uh, restroom and everything. Then I take them out, change them out, also, uh, when we were taking the small kitchen there, we were ripping that out. Uh, we got it from ceiling, it'll go to structural heating beams in there, we had a little bit of structural work too. Just really just put a refresh on that downstairs here.
And a warming kitchen upgrade too, right?
Uh, we were putting a warming kitchen in there.
And, and then another question, so the Evernathy Art Center isn't on here, I mean, are we, how will we address that? We determined to move forward and do something with that site?
We are still in conversations right now with the Art Sandy Springs on planned future usage, there will be more coming back to you on that. But there isn't a budget planning item in here at this point. I do anticipate bringing something back to you at a later point though.
So like a budget amendment?
Or it would be the next presentation, so it wouldn't be a budget amendment.
Oh, great, okay.
And just one more question, if I may.
Yes.
Um. When we have these, uh, like, so we have these projects to do improvements. Do we have plans in place so that we do improvements along the way versus all at once? Because if you do them incrementally, it's sometimes it's more cost effective than waiting, waiting, and then you have a big catch up.
That is in essence what our facility condition assessment identifies, it actually had identified using the planning tool, one, one point two million dollars, I believe was the number. But our team went through and evaluated what needed to be done in this budget year, and that's why that number is down to three fifty four. A lot of these, we do try to do exactly as you're describing in a, I don't like to say piecemeal, but as they are necessary, because you're right, it does make it more cost effective. Instead of having to redo the whole thing at one time.
Mr. Julia. Even several years ago, I rented in Lost Corners to do a, a corporate function. And it's a fabulous facility, only thing is it doesn't have a kitchen. Have we considered putting a kitchen in there, I think that would tremendously increase our utilization and our rentability of Lost Corners, have we? And I know I, I spoke to Michael about, I don't know where Michael is, he's. I spoke to Michael about it at one point in time, have we considered putting a kitchen in there? And, uh, increasing the, uh, rentability and the usability of that facility, it's such a great location.
It absolutely is.
Great facility.
And we can certainly get some pricing together about what that would be, if my memory serves, we actually were talking about it from the beginning when we first acquired it. And we unfortunately had to value engineer it out back then. But we can sit down and talk about it and get you a number.
Cause it was, it was built of the house, so it's gotta have the basic plumbing and electrical and stuff like that and sewage to, to, uh, facilitate that.
Okay.
When, are we gonna get a, um, update on the Georgia Holocaust Commission, the two million dollars?
And we are anticipating having our report from Consult Econ, so that council can make a decision on if you want to add the additional exhibit space on the upper floor. In the next, I believe we're at three weeks out now, maybe two weeks out, considering today's May second. So I would anticipate there being a decision point coming up in the next few weeks, but we will have that information for you as soon as possible.
So we'll have the information before we vote on this.
Before you vote on final budget, yes, ma'am.
That's awesome. Uh, thank you, so the Heritage Lawn stream, stream.
It's, it's missing an A, sorry.
Oh, it's okay, stream buffer, I didn't know, we're language we're speaking there for a second, stood in, we did a stood in buffer. Uh, is that the plan that was drawn up a couple of years ago that had the, is that a strange looking structure over the, over the spring? That everybody thought was fantastic, I thought it was terrible, so I don't know if you even saw those.
I have heard about them from Dave, but I haven't seen them, so what we were trying to do is, is come up with a new design to actually. Make something happen in that area, that's the goal for those funds.
Okay, so we're not picking up, necessarily picking up that old design, okay.
John, that, that lawn area because of water has become basically unused. So the goal here is to return it to some form of usability. We've lost revenue because we, we can't do weddings down there because it's a pod, so what we're trying to do is get the stream. Uh, channeled in a way that makes it look like a spring and still makes the lawn usable, it's just, uh, bad water.
Again, I agree, in fact, I think that's a great idea, it's just that structure that had been proposed at one point. No, I don't think that's my plan. Okay, and then finally, I thought we did this study a couple of years ago where we looked at all of the facilities. And all of the maintenance that was gonna take place over all of the years of all of these facilities. And that was gonna be a facilities condition.
That's it, the facility condition assessment.
And I thought we were gonna put, it's like the roof on your condo, right, you put X amount in every year and, and twenty years when the roof is ready, you have the money already. I, I can't believe that all of our facilities only cost us three hundred fifty four thousand dollars a year.
Dave, would you like to speak to how we identified the three hundred fifty four?
They remember this conversation, this big, big.
That number did come out of that, uh, company, so what, uh, our, our, for that, for this year, the actual amount at one point two million. But we did, we went out and inspected every building on those different items, like it says, the roof is coming up to be replaced this year. We went out and inspected the roof and we think we can have more years on it, so we did, we took that off, that's how the roof, the units, they need to be replaced, so we put that on, that's where we got that number. So this, this is gonna allow us to do the, the needed repairs this year.
Okay, okay. Well, the whole goal of this is not to get hammered with a big number, but then you give me here by stashing money every year. I don't wanna be cheating that idea and have something pop up that we should have been saving for that we didn't.
Yes, sir.
Correct, so I. I noticed that, uh, well, I guess Veterans Park isn't on here, um, I guess we're okay.
It's on your agenda tonight, we have identified savings within our FY twenty three budget.
We're moving some money.
So it will be fully funded with FY twenty three, with the exception of the art, the art is not part of the appropriations.
Got you, and the tennis center and, uh, Hammond Park, uh, the, the facility there, uh. I guess they didn't make the cut or?
That's under Wreckin Park, we'll be getting to that in a few minutes.
Got you.
And for Hammond, we would not set aside capital dollars yet or something, because we're still doing the master plan, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So back to John's discussion. Now I'm a little confused, did we not, are we still gonna be on a pay as you go for? For what are effectively, well, there's two kinds of items, there's repairs, then there's replacements, basically items that are. That have been depreciating, are we, have we landed in the, I don't remember, we landed in the, do not create any sinking fund, I know the bonds don't require a sinking fund. Um, so we, let's just be very clear, we on a pay as you go?
We are. We still have a fleet fund, which we're replacing, we're doing a transfer out of the general fund in this budget, find the fleet fund again going forward. But we had a, a lot of conversation last year, we talked to the auditor.
Yeah.
And made the decision that it was more efficient for us to manage and have it as part of our general fund.
I guess what we ought to be, even I know it's there, we wanna be reminded on a. Regular basis, I don't, not ready to define that.
Okay.
On what we're looking forward in the next year, two, three. Um, you know, certainly, we, we need to be mindful of what's coming up, because if this thing jumps from. You know, three fifty to two point five or whatever, um, on anticip, on items that are anticipated. Uh, we may want to plan for it, yeah, because we're effectively utilizing, that's what depreciation is, you're utilizing this stuff. And, and argument can be made that you pay, you pay as you go by setting aside as you go.
Right.
Um, I don't have a great answer, because the flip side of that is when we start seeing buckets of unused money. You know, that we get antsy and wanna spend it. So, I, I don't have an answer for that, but this is, I thought we decided, sorry to interrupt you, I thought we had decided to build a sinking fund.
Yeah.
So that we didn't get a big spike in your X.
That was.
Cause we've been building up for it.
That was good budget, that's not true now?
No, we did not, we folded that in last year into the budget, so we have the fleet fund and the general fund, stormwater fund. Now, what we are utilizing is the five year CIP, and you will see that, because that is our planning tool, knowing what our capital needs are into the future.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I don't think, John, we did adopt it, but then we, I couldn't, but we talked about it quite a bit, I just, I can't remember what we finally did. It, it just, it just feels, you know, in our kitchen, table economics at home, we, you know, there are times that we set aside things. If you, if you're fortunate enough to do pay as you go, that's great, I just, and I know we've talked about fleet may be more predictable.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's gonna become, I, I think maybe the discussion was, we're just not there yet, but it, it can become egregious at some point. Um, now maybe it'll be at a time when our debt starts dwindling down.
Perfect time.
Uh, well, I mean, it, that, those may match the timing. We continue to look at that five year CIP, which we never actually, that's a, that's a planning and guidance tool. Um, we've never adopted it, and I, and I would be loathe to adopt it, because there were things in there that maybe. Um, we've never adopted it, and I, and I would be loathe to adopt it because there were things in there that maybe uh, I, I might want more of a line item say on some stuff as a council member.
I wouldn't want you to adopt that out here because it takes flexibility away. What you adopt is the current year and then you see to your point what the planning needs are for the future.
Okay, are we, a couple of other persons since I have before, uh, the Holocaust, uh, thing, you know, we're gonna be playing bank. Uh, if that project goes, so is that, because we, we currently have somewhere over three million stuff remaining. It's literally been, it's sitting in a bank right now.
It's sitting in a CIP fund.
Okay, so we're talking about adding to that because again, we are. We are playing bank if we, if the D L S structure goes through. On the paint house, is the plan to get that building reopened or? That, that this gets?
This does the lower level, not the upper floor. So if we wanted to utilize the upper floor, for example, like for office space, we would have to do some additional work there. We'd have to fix some of the floor joys.
Yeah, so we've never, we, we've not really had any robust discussion on the William Paint House site. Um, just leave it at that for now. Since Heritage. That's just not been a.
No, but we've known that we needed some maintenance there.
Yeah, but I think, I, 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 I'm not opposed to this, I just, I'm worried that we're putting the, the cart ahead of the horse here. And I, I think this is a, something that we need to have a robust discussion about. Uh, about that building, uh, and about the, about the campus that plays into all of these things that we're doing and, and now, maybe it wasn't our intent, but now that we're getting the, uh, the, the proposals from the developers, you know, I, I, I would be hard pressed to make any real decisions. And at this point now, I mean, there was a time where maybe we were gonna a, advance some parts of the, of the campus, but now we're about to see more about the surrounding thing. So I mean, this is not a huge expenditure, but I, I would hope that we place on our to do list a discussion about the paint house. I mean, there's, there's issues of city artifacts. There's city history, use of that space, the history of that building and, and what's gonna be the long term cost of that building. Um, so while, if, if we need to do certain things to keep that building standing and you know, temporarily viable, like, like we've done with Heritage, I, I would be cautious about major expenditures in that building until we have a, a discussion.
We did have to replace the roof this fiscal year. I mean, that is a necessary thing. Yes, we'll bring back a discussion to a, a future council.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is communications. Um, staffing will remain the same under the proposal here. What we are asking for is an increase for training specifically in video editing as we begin to push out more videos and increase our reach across our various social media channels. We're also asking for some additional camera equipment for utilization during our video filming and the promotion of our various programs. And then funding for additional web services and additional build out. I did get an update today from the team that looks like we should have our new search engine fully functional in the next two months. So I'm excited about that. We also have included as a capital request, the continuation of, of our outdoor art program, which as you all know is the Public Art Program in partnership with Art Sandy Springs, primarily has been here on the campus. But that is a continuation item in the capital budget. And you're probably wondering why is that in communications? Well, it is because communications is our liaison to Art Sandy Springs for this project and for the art in the City Hall Gallery that we have installed.
So does the fifty thousand represent an increase?
It's just, it's the continuation of it.
Right, okay, so are we, is it currently costing fifty?
Well, that's the buy, that's the buy stuff, right? To buy some of these pieces.
Well, it's, it's a couple of purposes. One is to bring the art in that's out there right now. And then after the decisions made, which ones we're buying, then so there's a stipend paid out of these to the artists. Okay, are exhibiting out there now. Once the decision's made to buy one or more of those, it also comes out of that. Purchase, it's also get the lift, the art that's out there right now.
So under the, i- in our unaudited financials, the most recent one, um, there's a outdoor art program line items with different numbers, or not fifty, um, is that different than the art program we're talking about right now?
No, it could be, and I don't have that in front of me that you're looking at, but it could be that we've already expended money out of it for the year that we've spent stipends. Or we could have had money that was continued because it was a capital appropriation. What's the amount that you said?
Oh, it says eighty one, uh, nine, eighty one thousand nine hundred and sixty nine for a year to date.
Let us look at that and see what's happening.
Did we spend some money on a Veterans Park sort of exercise?
Michael has an answer for us.
That was basically, um, we decided to buy a little more than fifty thousand dollar park. In that instance, and that led to, um, the park, the education director. They basically told us during budget meetings that that's just not gonna happen. That we're just, we, we are, we're gonna set our limit at fifty thousand, make some choices on pieces that we're, that we're going to get. But, um, it's just basically, we just bought a little more. Uh, also because of, with COVID delaying some things, and I think that also happened. We're putting fifty thousand dollars in a year, and we're trying to keep the program within a year. Sometimes the art pieces, the decision does get made a little bit later. Uh, some money carries forward, uh, which is how the capital fund works. The budget stays in there. Uh, and you think, you might think you have a little more than you do, so you buy that. And then next year's program comes up and says, okay, now I'm gonna buy some, wait a minute, you already used it on everything. And we're also gonna try and keep that, that, um, you know, within a year, so you don't have that kind of carry for that distorts the, what you're actually, what you're actually trying to, what you're actually trying to purchase in that year.
So you're saying it's a rolling budget?
It's all of the capital fund, uh, all of the capital fund, when you budget into the capital fund stays there. Uh, and you know, until, until the project's done, you close it out or, um.
There's monies in there that are obligated but not spent, right?
It might be encumbered. So fifty thousand, yes, alright. Alright, next up is Public Works. Public Works has two operational enhancements that are requested this year. Eight one one integration, the state changed the law a couple of years ago on us. And we are now required to update our mapping of our fiber and our assets in the right way. We anticipate that that's going to cost us seventy thousand dollars over the course of the year in order to get that work, not only the mapping done, but to also pay the registration fees and for the tickets that have to be processed. The next item is equipment upgrades at one twenty five. That is two new spreaders, which are replacing spreaders that we bought after Snowpocalypse in two thousand fourteen. So they are, they're getting a little long in the tooth and time to be replaced. We are also replacing furniture in our traffic management center, which is like Fire Station Four, beginning to show some age and some things are not working as well anymore. And then we're getting a couple of new portable message boards. Within their capital requests, we are continuing our city beautification program with an additional one thirty five. We have included as an assumption this year, the construction costs for the high flight pedestrian crossing because the design was a valid item last year that council approved. Payment management, we have set aside seven point four million dollars this year to continue our resurfacing plan within the city. A hundred and sixty thousand dollars for stormwater repair and maintenance. Traffic management center fiber program of six hundred thousand. Roswell Road at Martha Access to Transit, Streetscape two fifty. Roswell Road at Lake Placid Intersection Improvement, this is Bath Arms and Signals, the three hundred and fifty. Guardrail replacement program continues at fifty thousand. Intersection and operational improvements at six hundred thousand. This would be to implement things like up, signal timing and upgrades at Trobridge and Roswell Road. Stormwater capital improvements of two million dollars. Traffic calming of fifty thousand dollars, that's partnership with our neighborhoods who wish to install and move forward with traffic calming. Six hundred thousand for our traffic management program. A hundred and ninety thousand for Peach Street, Dunwoody Multi-Botul Study, which you all heard about, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Moving forward with an application for that. And then rehabilitation of our internally illuminated street signs this year. We are replacing them on Abernathy, Roswell, Wright, Glen Ridge, Sandy Spring Circle, Johnson Ferry Road, Morgan Falls, Hammond, and a number of other places in the city. I'll make sure to get you a list of where those are. Any questions on those topics, but we will dive into capital more in just a short few minutes.
So these came off of the long list of capital projects. This is just their time.
Correct, that's exactly right.
Well then, for the guardrail replacement program, it has five hundred and fifty thousand.
Because that's capital fund and it continues year after year, just as to add another fifty thousand to it.
Okay, so, okay, so it says for each fiscal year of five fifty, five fifty, five fifty, five fifty.
We did not do the full five fifty this year because they have funds sitting there. So we're only appropriating what we believe can be reasonably spent during this next fiscal year. Yes, sir.
I seem to remember last year I got a, three or four emails, totally unsolicited from some company that goes out for your guardrails, figures out the accidents, figures out the insurance companies and gets you, uh, money to replace the guardrails. Do we utilize that type of a service?
We have a meeting scheduled with him in two weeks, Jennifer, is that right?
Yes.
Um, we're looking at.
He's finally worn us down?
Yes, but I'm all for, as you know, trying to get revenue from other sources. Part of the challenge with that is identifying who actually did the damage to it. So all too often, they don't call police and we don't know.
Don't those companies do all that back and forth? And all we do is get some proceeds?
They take a percentage. I'm not sure what the percentage is, but we would get the difference between their fee and what they recover.
Okay, and they just use the police reports?
But that's assuming a police report is filed.
Oh yeah, I'm saying, that's the only time you're gonna get it, right? As far as this camera coverage. Coverage, you saw it, yeah.
This is just a general question. Whenever we apply for grants, cause I know we have done some, I think, in public works and other areas. And some of those grants would require a city contribution if we are awarded it. How do we budget for that, that placeholder, um, for those grants that we know are outstanding and we could be awarded?
We try to put that in as matching grants so that, and that's under general admin, which we're not talking about today. But in general, we wait until we hear yes or no on the grant before we start budgeting the required match. You don't wanna budget the entire amount because then you create a supplanting issue that would impact our ability to get the grant.
So it's in the, at general admin, but then if the, does the funds won't come, you know, get appropriated properly? Once we know where it go, if it's a public work.
They would get shifted to capital.
We'll shift to the right area, okay.
What goes into the city beautification program? What type of expenditures?
Well, a perfect example right now is the work that's happening at Abernathy, Johnson Ferry, and Brandon Mill. We are replacing the sidewalk and we're putting in landscaping in that area. We are also doing a similar project at Glen Ridge and Roswell Road.
Okay, and so do we have like a master plan or?
So we do have, uh, some plans for that and we can get that and send it out to you all. Alright, next Recreation Parks Programs. This year, we wanted to try to give you guys as much information as possible and wanted to give you some insight into the number of registrants and participation into our recreation park programs. Michael and his team have done a amazing job and it's truly been a banner year. As you can see from their number of registrants across all of their programs, we've had almost four thousand participants in our Recreation and Parks Program. The total expenses for those programs are a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. We brought in revenue of almost seventy seven thousand dollars, so that gives us a price per participant of about twenty one dollars. Uh, clearly, one of our highlights of the year was our, um, paint like Bob Ross. Uh, we had a lot of people that came out and experienced that, but soccer, back to school night, All-Star Sports Camp. We had a lot of programming happening. This year, some of Michael's request is some additional programming that I'll talk to you about in just a second. Our contractor programs also had a busy year, especially coming off of COVID. And we saw a total of seventy one thousand registrants through our contractor programs this year.
And they gave what last year, well, of course, last year doesn't count because it was.
It was still COVID, but we can pull nineteen. That would probably be our most normal year.
It'd be interesting to see. How it's going, how it's trending.
Got it.
If we have more response, do we drop the program the next year?
You know, we, we evaluated sometime there are factors that, that make it maybe not be successful, but we, if we're still confident in it, we'll, we'll give it another shot. And then sometimes, sometimes it's just, maybe you use to get in three or four years. But, uh, and I can't really think of any example right off the top of my head, but, um, yes ma'am. If this not making, and especially if it's a, if it's a contract program where we're doing it with, with another provider. Uh, number, if the numbers aren't there, then, then we won't offer it.
Well, the Friends of Lost Corner Ferry House gnome home, we had three people. Was that a success? How many gnomes live in Sandy Springs? Well, I'm just saying, you know, you have some kind of criteria for whether to keep these things alive.
Well, some of those are buyer providers, like Lost Corner did that, and I, and I don't know what. Events maybe took place with that.
Here's our programs.
Okay. Well, if you go back, you, you'll see that the river and the tennis center is not big ones. Eighty to ninety percent of our participant. So between the ten thousand, the fifty one thousand, the sixty one thousand, or seventy one thousand. There's a lot, there were a lot of bees.
Parents' night out, I mean, they didn't need one, I guess. Then we won't do that again.
We'll take a look at it and see what.
Cause we had to staff it and everything, right?
And maybe we didn't market it as broadly as we could have or should have.
And, and I don't know if that was part of, gymnastics had a parent night out, that could have been. Trying to think for the parents' night out, that, that's the only one that comes to my mind.
So the requested enhancements from Wreckin' Park this year are additional cameras. This would be at the Morgan Falls Athletic Complex for seventeen cameras. Three cameras at Ridgeview Park and five cameras at Windsor Meadow. Our new programs, we are planning to bring forward a new winter festival. One that I'm personally excited about, a five K nine race, so that you can come out and walk or run with your dog. And outreach environmental education. We also have an increase in contractual services, which is for park maintenance and repairs and landscaping. That landscape contract is currently pending and hopefully we'll be able to have a decision on that briefly. For capital, we also have, uh, some requested improvements for Crooked Creek Park Trail, which is up in the Panhandle area. That is a partnership with the National Park Service. And then also we've included design money to improve Morgan Falls Dog Park. Our lease with Georgia Power on that property goes until twenty thirty five, so I'll put a plan for some investments there and potentially do either fundraising or apply for grants to implement that.
It desperately needs help.
Not to, in, in any way insinuate opposition to these. Where do you draw the line, uh, between an item like Crooked Creek Park Trail improvements, which is fine, and maybe there's a reason cause it's a partnership and an item that might be on a back.
The creek was a valid item last year, and that's the reason this is the main implementation.
And then more, and Morgan Falls Dog Park improvement?
It's simply based upon our staff assessment that it is in really bad condition and we need to come up with a plan to fix it.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm not arguing that. I'm just wondering how you, wh- wh- how you, it's a staff decision.
It's a staff recommendation.
Um, do we have a utilization on the, the, the dog park? I mean, do we, is it being used?
Oh, yes.
I'm, I don't know, I've not been up there.
And especially as we get ready to open the trail segment going through that area, it is going to get used even more heavily. Yes, sir.
So this Crooked Creek Park Trail improvements, this is the one that's gonna be done to improve the pathways.
That's right.
And I understand the park services. What is the status of the park service discussions? At one point I heard here, and they were gonna charge us to allow us to improve their property. I'm not a big fan of doing that. Can you elaborate on that or where are you on that?
Chris and Michael, let's go and speak.
We, we, because when we've met with them, we were out there with with superintendent. Maybe two, three weeks ago, because we did get the same. There, there is something from National Park Service where. In order to recruit the money that their staff time is spending. They're gonna start charging some of the nonprofits or or preferable partners. Something to do with their time. I have been assured that this project, since it was started before some of that discussions took place. Park wide throughout the country that were a little bit grandfathered. I don't know if that's the term they used. But I kind of had the same thing, but it's like. I'm coming here trying to help you with access, the only access to your park. Which is, and I'm gonna pay, and I've gotta pay you for your time.
Yeah, that's my exact reaction.
We're working, we're working around it, or as best as best we can. There's seventy five thousand in there now that would put some. Um, some decking across areas that are wet. And we feel like that's only gonna probably be about half of what we need. And we're working with them. They're, they're waiting right now on us to provide some stamp drawings that we're working on to get to them, about to get on that as quickly as we can.
Well, quit to pay a penny to them for their time to watch us do our work on their property at our expense. I don't want to do it. Okay, I'm just telling you right now.
Yes, sir.
It's not impossible to walk today.
It's not.
You can walk it today.
That's, no, that's exactly right, but.
Okay.
Honestly, the conversation was, listen. If if you don't want us doing this work, we don't have to do this work.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me know how that turns out, please. Ms. Rochelle.
On the Morgan Falls Dog Park implements, that's just a design for eighty thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
It's an estimate.
It it would be for, we, we've already started a little bit of conceptual design because we have some money in contractual. Fund within operating, so we're having to do a little preliminary work. But to do, to do the surveying that it's going to take. And construction documents. And getting it to a point for perimeter design. Again, in construction documents, because what we want to do is work with the community. There's also public engagement this part of this. That's one cost money. We're gonna present it to mayor and council before design is finalized for your, for your approval. And then we will go back and come, there'll be an estimate what the cost will be. And uh and we'll come back to you next year probably during this time for capital dollars. And if we don't eat, if we don't, if we don't eat all of those dollars, we're not gonna spend them. So it just depends on how much uh. You know, that's right around the the colonial pipeline, unwritten. It's got transmission lines above it. So there's investigation we have to take to make sure we're. I'm hoping that's a little bit high because I don't want to come to you for fifty and it be eighty. I'd rather ask for eighty and it be fifty and come back and those dollars can be re-appropriated or applied to the construction.
I have the same reaction.
Well, we've been getting tremendous. People have been, in the community have been really upset that that dog park is horrible.
I think, I know it needs work. I want to do it. I just thought that was a lot for design since I, we need a gate here and a fence here.
Very environmentally sensitive area there at the river with the power lines and the gas line, all of that areas. You gotta be very careful before you start doing stuff.
Right, um question, yes, ma'am. You. Do we anticipate any changes with respect to the I G As that we have right now with with the schools or any?
Did you have any, anyone in particular?
Sandy Springs Middle. Sandy Springs Middle was what I was thinking about.
I don't, I don't remember when that one expires. In a year or two, I think, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Um. That was a five-year I G A, and it was five years compared to some of the others that are maybe ten, because they didn't know if during, if if. Renovating the North Springs High School would have impacted them for their sports field, et cetera. So they only allowed us to do a five-year I G A. And for that I G A, we made certain capital improvements with them. I've got to look at the date on that. I don't think we're bumping up on that date yet.
Okay.
But the way we have typically done that is we'll go back to them and and look at what, what we would be spending a year. Comes the number of years that we look to have an agreement. And use those dollars on their side rather than send them. To the, to their general point.
Okay, and you're not expecting, I guess, anything as far as. Um maintaining the Hammond Park facility, I guess that's just sort of, that's not, they didn't make it here. I guess it's not a big enough number.
We're, we're in the middle of this, of the master plan for the.
For the whole, yeah.
And we'll be coming back to council with, with some ideas or to ask for clarification and direction from council.
Right, just in terms of basic maintenance, just basic, just basic maintenance, like I remember like pests, like the squirrel issue and things like that.
I think we were, I think our budgets. Our budgets are good for that, and ours and facilities.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, thanks. Okay, next up is community development. This Ginger Sopel, it's gonna come up and. Educate us on the successes they had this year and talk about their requests. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, here's planning and zoning's numbers for the year. Um, it was kind of a slow year for zoning hearings. Um, our character area map amendments were pretty much average. Typically don't get a lot. Our variances were pretty much on par at around eighteen. And number nineteen there is a combination of administrative variances, which are the ten percent that I can grant. And as well, um, maybe a handful of noise variances. Zoning certification letters were just a little bit down uh from last year, the year before. And text amendments were pretty high. Matthew's been very busy this year. Oops. Okay, permits processed. Um, we're pretty much on par with uh what we did the year before. Plans reviewed are a little bit up to. To make up that difference in the previous years with the numbers. Inspections performed are up as well and developer meetings. That number is a little, looks a little different this year because we've added. The additional developer meetings that we have during the week that we can't accommodate on Thursdays. Thursday is a very popular day. For us uh downstairs and we've had to add about an average of one to three a week to accommodate the extra requests. Anybody have any questions on these numbers? Um, for uh revenue, um our revenue uh was. Let's see, we gotta find the middle column. Um. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two is where we're, we should be looking right now. We're up significantly in building permits. Mostly because we started adding back in a fee that we had not been charging. The, the system wasn't automatically. Adding the fee for plan reviews and we discovered that. Um, at the end of uh twenty twenty-one and started implementing it. So that's why we see such a big jump. In uh the building permit fee section. Our impact fees were pretty average. And as, as well as the others in this line. Does anybody have any questions about our revenues? Our code enforcement cases, um. It was pretty average as far as complaints were, were concerned. Notices of violations were up a little. Citations were up a bit. Transferred cases are the cases that we get in code enforcement that get transferred over to uh. The land development team. And um. Resolutions are the numbers of cases that were resolved at the end of the year. So as you can see, the number of resolutions this year to the number of complaints was pretty high.
What, why is that? Why is the resolutions was greater? Half again what it was last year?
I would say that um we've put a concerted effort into making sure that we close the cases at the end. And we found in the past that uh a lot of them had been left dangling and. The officers didn't have time to go back in and close them out formally. So that was one of the big pushes we had this year. Business license inspections um were down this year. The reason it was so high in the prior year was because of COVID. Um, so a lot of folks um didn't renew their business license applications in the prior year, so we had a lot of. Lot of cases to go back out and review. That's why that number was so high. This year, we were kind of back on track. And so that's a more typical number, the thirteen fifteens, it's a more average year for us for those inspections. Gas station sweeps should be more aptly titled, um vehicle. So vehicle inspection, the, the, the amortization schedule that we have. That's what the gas station sweeps should actually say. So those were. Reports on the um inspections that we had done on those. Uh, all vehicle related uses that we have in the city along Roswell Road. Um, sign enforcement in the right of way, I guess, um our messaging has, that we've gotten out about signs in the right of way has been pretty good, so we didn't have too many cases on that. Our apartment sweeps, so this is last year's number, so next year, when you look at this number, hopefully it'll say a hundred. Um, and our short-term rental number is significantly higher because that includes. And inspection of an entire uh complex, because we had a lot of complaints at an apartment complex. So every unit was inspected by the team, by two of the members of the team. Any questions on any of these numbers?
When you inspect an entire complex, that means you go into every particular. Like apartment?
Right. We, we knock on the door and have a conversation with them or if they let us in, we'll take a look around. And that's it. We coordinate that with uh management.
So when you said that's the amortization language, is that just gas stations or is that all the automated uses?
It should be all the auto. Yes, I, that is.
Okay, and in the number, why was it so low in twenty twenty-one? Is that just because it kind of the out of the COVID or?
Yes, I would say that's accurate.
And then I'm still not, I'm, I'm not following the short-term rentals. Um. So that's short-term rentals as it relates to. Um, someone said that there's one in an apartment building, so you go, go into all the units in the building or on the floor?
So, so very often our software captures a lot of um units in a complex, but we can't identify what unit specifically it is. So we will work with management to look and see if we can identify. Which apartment it is, and sometimes as a result, we have to look in all of them. So we did actually, I think it was the Adly, had a lot of uh units. That were advertising for short-term rental.
Okay, so this is, these are people calling to complain about it. This is, we have the software that does the.
It could be a combination of both. I'm guessing I think it's both. Ms. Rochelle.
What are the rules in the apartments? Do they not allow short-term? Um rentals?
I believe they can, however, they need the permission of the uh management company if they do. And then they have to register with us. But that's one of those that does not need the homestead exemption.
So have we found a lot of apartments that are being rented that haven't, that don't have permission? Out of the four hundred and sixty-one, like how many of them?
I can get that number for you. I don't know exactly, but I'll look at it.
And we're continuing to look over the advertisements and.
Absolutely. Yes.
So I have a neighbor who's watching, I think, two homes in our neighborhood. And. For some reason, she sees on VRBO or whichever one of these sites she sees and then she. She somehow moves into our system to see if we know that they're there or. Know, know of them and uh. It's gotta be a tremendous, tremendously hard job trying to keep track of all these, and it's just gonna get. More, there's gonna be more and more proliferation of this. Is, is there a way to, are you keeping track? Do you have some way to keep track of? A short-term rental pops up in Sandy Springs on VRBO or whatever. I'm just picking them as an example. Do we automatically get a ping that, yep, a new one popped up in Sandy Springs and let's go see if it's on our list and if it's approved and all this other stuff? Otherwise, how do you keep track of all this?
So it doesn't work exactly like that, but if we did look at the website, so we had, we subscribe to a service. That tracks all of the. Most of the major uh websites out there that are carrying these and some of the little more obscure ones. Um, and, and we can go on there every day. We, if. If we have the time, we could look every single day and look at the numbers and then. Um, go through the list and see, because we, we keep track. And um for, for those that are, that shouldn't, that are advertising that shouldn't be. We keep a separate list of those and uh we track our um compliance with them. So we send out letters. That's kind of the first step. And if they withdraw their um application or, or their advertisement. Then we kind of take them off and they're no longer advertising. We don't have to pursue it further than that. If we find out there are, say, thirty days that they're. Uh, still up there and they're ignoring us, then we'll send an officer out to investigate to see. Uh, whether or not they're still operating that way. And then if they are, we'll issue a citation. And seek compliance, which is either come and apply or uh stop renting in ways that you are in advertising it.
So are you envisioning that the short-term rentals number of four sixty-one is gonna go up this year and gonna go up the next year, I mean?
It, it depends on it, whether or not we get another complaint or a series of complaints from um. An apartment complex that seems to have a higher incidence of. Advertisements that we catch in that system, in our. Compliance system.
Okay, Julia. My understanding is right, that people rent an apartment. And then take that apartment and put it in a short-term rental program? And the management company uh or ownership of that apartment complex lets people rent out? Or some rent out, or however you want to call it, apartments within their complex?
I would say a, a lot of them don't allow it. Um, but I think some do, and I can try to get you information on that to see how many that we have that are registered.
Because I thought all the short-term rentals were like mostly houses.
They usually are. Yes. But a lot of them are, even hotels advertise on VRBO.
Well, hotels in the process, is in the business of short-term rentals. And so I can understand that, but I can't understand somebody going out renting an apartment and then turning it into a. A, a rental unit.
Think about it, if they can rent it out for two hundred dollars a night and they can rent it five nights a week, that's their rent for the month. Or I'm slightly under. Estimating that, but.
Right, I understand what you're saying, yeah. I just didn't expect that. Oh, well, it's a different world.
So, um. Our annual reviews are broken down by division. Uh, for the building department is three thousand. It was three thousand, but this past year a little bit up through the prior year because our uh numbers were up for the number of permits submitted. Land development, uh forty-seven hundred, planning and zoning, twenty-nine hundred and other, which includes. Uh, the fire marshal's office, G I S, sustainability. So that's uh, and. The public works is in that other number. Uh, what we're looking for this year, um, we're looking to replace all of the iPads for um. For all of the inspection staff, I think they were estimated what, three fifty each? Um, so I think we have about eighteen. Math works.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, because we're including um new iPads for um the planning and work of kids. Bodies, um. The building, building out the permit lobby, so. Having the uh, the lobby ambassador over the past year-ish. Um, we've had uh somebody there full-time for a good period of time and now um on a part-time basis. We've gotten uh rave reviews and um a lot of people have really liked that enhancement, including staff. Staff from um the revenue side as well as uh the permit side have, have really enjoyed having that person out there. So the extra fifty thousand that we're asking for is to build. A formal place for, for this person to sit, a, a desk area that, that will hold paperwork that she can hand out to the customer. a formal place for for this person to sit, a desk area that that will hold paperwork that she can hand out to the customers when they come in. And small tools and equipment, that's just for the folks in the cars that they might need out in the field. Measuring tapes, laser measures, that sort of thing to to keep them fully outfitted so they can do their jobs out in the field. And then we're looking for hopefully a full time position for this lobby ambassador. So that, because right now we're we're using funds that are in hopefully, what fund is it in? Technical consulting services, I think, is where the funds are coming for from right now to pay for this part time person from an outside staffing company.
Contractual.
Contractuals. Thank you. Contractual services. And then capital requests, citywide design guidelines. We're looking for a hundred and fifty thousand to help fund that in this upcoming fiscal year. So I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Questions? Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're going to move into the Performing Arts Center. We had some questions about the number of attendees at signature events, and we wanted to go ahead and get this information out to you. We've included our estimated attendance in twenty twenty two, what we are projecting in calendar year twenty three, and then what we are projecting for expenses in twenty twenty four. You'll notice the Juneteenth amount is an estimate based upon what we are currently expending for our MLK Art and Film Festival, although we anticipate having more attendees at our Juneteenth event this year. City Green Lab, we had our first one of the year this past Friday night. Saw many of you there. It was a tremendous success. Kudos to Michael, Rameen, and the whole Performing Arts Center team. In addition, big kudos to Michael and Rameen for really doing a yeoman's job within the Performing Arts Center this year. I'm really happy to let you all know that this is the first year, both our current fiscal year and next year's fiscal year, that the general fund is not required to transfer a subsidy to the Performing Arts Center. And so we are able to to a combination of revenues coming in and our fund balance that we've built up within the Performing Arts Center, they're going to be self sufficient.
Hang on, you couldn't do me a favor and put totals on those columns in the last page, could you?
Total down at the bottom?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be happy to do that.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right. Next up, some information about the Performing Arts Center space utilization and food and beverage number of days booked. It's important to note that these numbers are through year to date and the end of April. So what you see here in January twenty twenty three through December thirty first twenty twenty three, May through December will likely increase. These are bookings that we already have on the books for those months. And the same with the food and beverage events that are in the planning process for May through December at the bottom.
And no sense in looking at twenty twenty one because of COVID.
We, I can certainly pull that for you, but you can't hear Michael and Rameen back there, but they're like, no, those are not good years to look at.
Well, it's it's monumental that the the current management team has been able to bring us to a break even point coming out of COVID within two years.
Yep.
And, you know, when we, when we started this, we never anticipated that would be even at at this point, that they would require some level of subsidy in perpetuity. That's what it's all told us. So this is a tribute to the management of this facility to be able to get us. We finally got a good management.
New management.
And they're selling tickets and getting the right kind of performances in there. And does every show make a profit? No. But overall, they've done a phenomenal job. And I had thoughts since we focused for how well you've done this in such a to be able to turn it around in such a short period of COVID. I don't know of any other facility that could say what we're able to say today.
So we're planning to take it to the next level next year. And here's some information on our requested enhancements. We are planning to implement Salesforce to help Amy Harris and our events and sales teams better track leads and stay on top of folks who are looking to utilize our facilities. That's the customer relationship software, thirty thousand dollars. We also have additional signature event cost of ninety nine thousand eight twenty five. We have upgrades to our projectors and our meeting spaces and other equipment for rentals. Hard to believe, but the building, the campus is five years old now. Things like screens, projectors reach a end of life and where they're no longer functioning as well as they were. So that is some upgrades to that. We also need to refinish the hardwood floors at Studio Theater. While we utilize it for council meetings and we put that lovely felt pad down, but we do have events there, the pad comes up and the floor is beginning to show some age. So we need to refinish the flooring there. And then ice rink operations and marketing. We've been planning for instituting our ice rink this coming fall and winter. The amount that's included in that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the rental of the ice rink and to get that up and running. We've also included fifty thousand dollars for marketing and forty thousand for staffing. We will have revenue coming in though from the ice rink because it will be ticketed. It will not be a free skate. And we are also hopeful that we will be able to come up with a fundraising plan that will be able to get a sponsorship that will offset the city's cost for the operations of the ice rink.
How was the sponsorship going? Have they found, have they identified some potentials on that?
I have a list of potentials that we're going to have to start making some calls to, but no.
Because I would think for Christmas, you've really got to get going on that.
We do.
Well, one of the things that we need, and and the staff hasn't requested it, but it's clearly, it's clear that we need it's a development director.
Yeah, that's right.
To go out, start building relationships. And that takes time. And you got to have somebody who has a sales background. And this is selling. And so Eden and I talked about that. That's something that we really need to make a priority on. And we're going to have to, a good development director more than pays for it.
But a good development director gets big bucks. And I mean, we have programs like John and I were talking the other day about the Veterans Park, because we have things that have to be rep fundraised for that, too. That should be something we should really.
Well, we had, you recall the first year or so that we had the City Springs Live, we had some sponsors. We had one person that went out and kind of on a commission basis and brought some sponsorships in. It's just that we have not been out in in there trying to sell those sponsorships. And we can do it, but we've got to get the right person.
Get a full time.
And 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 that's got to be something that we start to address. Eden and I have talked about it.
Good.
And as I envisioned it, it would be an overall city development director, not just for the Performing Arts Center, to a period point Veterans Park, but also for our Sandy Springs Police Department Qualified Law Enforcement Foundation. Now that we have that registered and are starting to receive donations from tax, from state taxes, we want to make sure that people are aware of that because those funds can be utilized to offset general fund needs.
And one of the reasons why we haven't sold brick, engraved bricks or seat backs is because we don't have anybody who's responsible for that. So we need that operation to be able to take us from break even to actually give these folks money to work with.
That person more than pays for themselves.
Absolutely, no question.
So if I may, this requires somebody sitting down next to put a plan together.
Yes.
Okay, outlining this, what do you get, what they're going to do and what their goals are, et cetera. There's a lot to this.
There is.
A lot of benefit that can come from organizing this.
There's an awful lot of revenue. I mean, first of all, being getting private entities to provide resources to a tax collecting organization is a tough sell. But we've got assets. I mean, the naming capability that we have on facilities here, sponsorships, the number of people that we're bringing to this campus has value. And with the right person, right team, we should be realizing some of that revenue that can be plowed back into the operations here to make it even more successful than the current management team. And it's a priority.
Eden, thank you. On the skating, are you going to come back to us with a little more detail on what the plan is?
We are projecting the revenue, for example, we're projecting that we'll be bringing in about a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars for the folks that are coming to skate there. The plan as it is now, because we have a number of moving parts with repairs to the cistern and to try to get the artificial person put in, we're looking to move the ice skating rate to be in front of the stage. Long term, we would like for the rain to be come back seasonally on the Serpentine area so that we can better activate City Bar and tie it into programming that's happening in buyers and studio. But yes, we'll bring back some.
Yeah, I mean, the see what the net budget item is. And I love Sparkle Sandy Springs, but if you go back a slide, you know.
It's very pricey.
I'm sorry?
It's very pricey.
Well, it's fifty dollars a person. And, you know, I don't know if that's the most expensive of the items, but it's a lot. And you know, I don't know if there's an opportunity for to to look at that cost. Now, there's there's some revenue because we do borrow revenue and some other things, but I don't think we ought to just gloss over that size expenditure. And I kind of hard to say this because I really of the events, I loved that event. It's a fantastic event, but I think we we need to have a conversation. And when you look at the you know, the comparable event, what might be the, you know, the bang for the buck of the Stars of Stripes. Obviously, I mean, it's a third of the cost and twice the people. So we need to, we do need to take a look at at this. And I I didn't, I didn't want to just gloss over it. And I don't, and I don't really know what to make of it. Just want to think about it.
We have some plans that I can't speak about publicly yet with Sparkle that I think are going to reduce that amount, but we will be discussing it in greater detail soon.
On the video board, the capital request, I think that you have, you said City Bar, but I think that the board that's also in the Studio Theater, I think the one couple panels, does this cover both of them?
So we're taking the panels off City Bar that are still functional and putting them into the same board on Studio Theater.
Okay.
What we're talking about putting at City Bar is one large new screen instead of the individual matrix of screens.
And and then I thought that we had talked at some point about upgrades to City Bar.
We have.
And I I think it still looks, I don't think that's happened yet.
It hasn't yet. No, we put a hold on that until we can have some additional conversations. We brought a restaurant consultant in to give us a recommendation. And that's not included in this, but you'll hear some more about that coming up.
Okay, and then I'm assuming skate rental will be part of the ice skating.
It is.
Probably a lot of people still don't have their skates from.
There will be
Years ago.
A booth where you rent your skates or you can rent your sled so that you can, because I'm not going to skate without the sled, so.
And just in my mind, I'm really happy to hear that we're getting Salesforce. Thumbs up on that.
Yeah.
That that software has a lot of capabilities.
We're excited.
Maybe we can use that. I don't know. Once you get, we get it in, familiar with it in other areas as well.
There could be usage.
Yes.
That's for sure.
I think it's great that we're at break even at the pack. And but when will we see the revenue side?
That would be the line out of detail on the twenty third. We're still trying to give you the most current information and that'll give us the opportunity to get April's numbers in. Because what we are projecting right now in this revenue and budget scenario is based through the end of March.
Yeah, can I come back to that? Did you actually say that we're break even or did you say that the general fund?
We are not.
Yeah, I didn't think, I don't, I want to, could you clarify what you were actually saying, please?
For FY twenty three, we are not having to provide a subsidy
From?
From the general fund to the Performing Arts Center.
But there is money coming from where?
For twenty three.
Okay.
So for twenty four, we're also not providing a subsidy, but they will be utilizing some of their fund balance, just like we did with the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh oh.
Oh, boy.
Carolina.
The time for the meeting has expired.
That's exactly what it said. It says, we don't want you to present this now. Okay, you can follow along in your notebook. We're on page forty seven, slide forty seven. You see a breakdown of personnel by department. I do notice there is a typo on this as well. Under economic development for FY twenty three, it shows two. That number should be three. We do have a vacant director position on that one, but we are proposing the addition of eleven positions in FY twenty four. Moving to slide forty eight.
Eden, I'm sorry, so community development is forty four, but forty five, but there's no incremental in there? Does there be an incremental?
That should have been forty five there because we added them mid year already.
Thank you.
Okay, slide forty eight is a summary of our contracted service providers. For many years, as you know, Sandy Springs has prided ourselves on our public private partnership model of providing government services. And we still do a significant number of work areas through those public private partnerships. On the public safety side, we work with IXP for Chatcom for our nine one one services. Rural Metro Ambulance, which is also AMR, is our ambulance provider. North Fulton Regional Radio Authority, our radio system, Facilities and Fleet, Rupert Landscaping for our City Springs campus, Dynamic Security for our facility security, American Facility Services for janitorial services. Magic Mikes does a good bit of our fleet maintenance. Recreation and Parks is in the process of evaluating the parks landscaping and parks mowing. Park litter is through ProCutters. We spoke earlier about Faneuil, who provides our call center services. And then Public Works, we still refer to these as subcontractors, but these are the Sandy Springs, Movies by Moonlight, that is zeroed out, but the reason for that is that Performing Arts Center is now taking that in house and we will be doing Babies by Moonlight ourselves without leadership.
Remember, leadership said they didn't want to do it anymore, so we did it in house.
Yeah.
It was not, it was not an involuntary decision. It was a voluntary decision by leadership.
Is it on our list? Is it on one of these lists you've shown us of events or? No, it's not listed as an event there.
Oh, yes.
Or did we? Okay. And it's still, so it's still fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Six hundred.
Still be three thousand. And then the recreation grant program, we are keeping at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you call, we did increase that mid year to a hundred and fifty in the current fiscal year, and that's remaining the same here. Yes, sir.
I noticed solidarity Sandy Springs is not on our nonprofit, and they provide food to some of the poorest people in our city. Why have we not? Why, why are we not supporting an organization like that that provides one of the basic things in in life, which is food? And and I mean, the number of people they serve is astronomical.
Candidly, Councilman, some of the concerns we have is tracking of the clients that they serve. One of the things that Community Assistance Center does is track who is coming through. We can certainly have another conversation with Solidarity to see if they have begun tracking who is utilizing their services, but because we are paying for a service, we need to have that tracking component. It's not just a gift to a nonprofit. We need to see how the funds are being utilized.
They are doing some tracking. It may not be to the level
Yeah.
that we've asked for, but they are beginning to track folks coming through there. So we're talking to them again.
And I think it's some of the poorest people in our
Oh, yeah.
community.
I was there, volunteered.
The question is not that they shouldn't be served, but if you're not tracking, you don't know where they're coming from.
Well, I understand.
We need, the, our resources need to go to Sandy Springs people first. So that's the reason why I track them. So, that's for sure. That's for sure.
On the um recycling, the Keith's answer is beautiful, the ninety-five thousand. Um, what does that go towards? Because the other day, uh. So many complaints about our recycling center. And I feel like, and I've been over there and I feel like it needs, I think we talked about it. Um, are we.
Applied for a grant.
Right.
Through the effort, Kristen, if you'd like to speak to.
Yeah, so generally speaking, the. The market for recyclables is nothing, right? So. Keep More Cold and Beautiful is operating a recycling center on a shoestring budget. Um, and Kathy Reed has announced that she's leaving Keep More Cold and Beautiful and she's kind of been. Holding that.
Yeah.
Other as the glue. Um, so. You know, those are some things that we're talking about internally as they try to figure out what their next steps are, but. Generally speaking, you know, we've added in some additional funding for them to try to help them be able to retain staff because they want. Staff they can't pay what they need to pay to keep anybody there. Obviously, we we give them fifty thousand dollars per. Per year for capital improvement, but that facility is so old, that that money goes really quickly. So we've applied for that grant in hopes that we might be able to make the major improvements for the site, but. It's not a great site for recycling, but it's the only site that we have.
Is it right on that we should continue to opt for? Is that a way?
It it is heavily utilized, I'll tell you, and it has been a mess. Uh, but I was up there a couple of weeks, uh, a couple of weeks ago and they've done a good job of cleaning it up. It looks a lot better. It's a lot more organized than it has been in the past. Uh, it's heavily utilized and I tell you, you know, the the tragedy about recycling is everybody thinks that. Instead of going to the landfill, this is going into some kind of reuse. Uh, and and the market value for most of what they collect is zero or less.
Right.
Uh, the glass, a lot of the metals that they collect uh are, you know. There there are very few of those items that truly have any market value. So they end up tragically. Going to the landfill. Because there's no market value and so. Uh. They don't get revenue on a lot of those things that they're required to handle. So uh, that's why we have to subsidize them as they have, but they have done a better job lately. I have acknowledged it was, it was a. Trashy-looking place, but they've done a much better job of. Of keeping it clean.
I guess, I guess to Jody's point. Uh, it would be good to know um. What doesn't go to a landfill? I mean, to have some. Data. That I mean, because ultimately it goes to a landfill, I don't, we don't need that. Uh, so what we need them is to. Have end product that ends up in a recycled state. And and so it would be nice, and I, if they have that data. Uh, that would help inform a judgment uh on, you know, the the service it provides to the community, other than just a place to take. Alternative trash and feel good. Uh, that you're taking it there.
That's that's kind of a, I hate to say it, but in many cases, there is. I mean, basically, the payment products have value. Some value, not not as much as you would.
No, I I I get it. We fill it, we fill a recycle.
Yeah.
Container overflow every week that Waste Management comes to get it, and I'm very skeptical of where. That ends up, but you know, for.
By law, they're required, we are required meant to have a recycle program.
Well, at least let the, let let the taxpayers understand how much of the. Uh, their intake is going to a recycle program.
So what we're required is this.
We add that.
So the the data that I say available to me right now is from twenty twenty. But they recycle five hundred and fourteen thousand pounds of materials.
Out of.
Well, they do have to throw away, they they collected seven thousand pounds of trash. And a lot of people dump things at the recycling center. That's a problem that they have on.
Of course.
So they have giant roll-offs that they have to get taken out and they have to pay for that, obviously. Um, so out of five hundred and fourteen thousand, they had seven thousand of trash left, so.
Don't we?
Hmm.
Are we?
For much.
Um, are what other cities are? To like um. Come to our recycling plant, but our recycling center, because I know. Every city, I mean, they might be required, but I don't think every city has one, because I've heard like people from even John's Creek and Roswell come to ours, maybe, is that?
I've seen Cobb County plates over there.
Yes.
There is no screening.
Technically, there are some items that they are supposed to check your ID for, but that depends on whether or not they have staffing available to do that. Uh, on the day that you go.
Yeah, and they're not just recycling, some of it's safe disposal, right?
It is.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
Which I think is a valuable. You know.
Some of our what?
I- i- if they're providing a safe disposal service, like as it relates to paint and other hazardous materials, that's a valuable. Function as well. I mean, the stats you just gave, if if to be believed are like, well, okay, it's doing a great job, but. I thought it was gonna be a much more significant amount going to landfill, but if they're. Actually, you know, whether they get money or not. Whether there's, that's not really the question. The question is how much goes into. Ultimately ends up in recycle processes versus. What ends up in a landfill. It's a conduit for landfill, but we don't want to do it. It's a conduit, you know, significantly for hazardous waste and uh. Uh, and alternative disposal and for recycling, then, yeah, it's a great. A great use of uh.
And Kathy has to work really hard to find people to take those recyclable goods.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a constant thing for like, and figuring out, you know, who's gonna take this and. Then she may not make any money off of it, but at least they take it and recycle it. She works really hard to get that.
It's a potential.
And I assume the CAC provides a report to you. Um. Could, would you be willing to send that over for the most recent?
It'd be nice to actually have. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say everybody from. Here, but it would be nice to hear maybe at a work session have, or, you know, have somebody from CAC come on in. Which we've done in past years.
Good idea.
All right. Hope Caroline can go. I was trying to jump it ahead. All right, moving to our capital budget assumptions within our police fund, which we briefly touched on earlier, we have a replacement vehicle for the community development department. Uh administrative vehicles for the fire department. Fire apparatus replacement. Police replacement. Parts of recreation vehicle replacement and then continuing our electric vehicle initiative. That is a total of two point three million. Next slide, please, Caroline.
Is that our annual budget essentially?
Roughly.
Two point three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Roughly. Within our capital budget assumptions, in your materials, you had your ballot. But behind that, you also have a spreadsheet view of what you see on the screen. It's easier for you to look at it all on one page, because this does roll over to two. What we've done is taken the items that you saw on the departmental requests or the enhancements. They have been plotted out on here as a capital budget planning assumption. So to start with, we talked about the infrastructure hardware replacement. Workstation replacement, the parcel correction item is to enhance our GIS layer. So that we'll be able to pull down more information and have it available both to staff and to the public. We spoke about City Springs two, that two hundred thousand is for uh demolition and site preparation for the expansion of our campus. Artificial turf. The facility maintenance from a facility condition assessment. Police storage vehicle at Trobridge. Partial funding for heritage slash Georgia Commission on Holocaust. The stream buffer remediation design. And I won't read all of these to you, but these go back and tie back to what you saw on your individual slides. Caroline, go to slide fifty-three, please. On fifty-three, it's your capital ballot items for your consideration. Again, in your notebook, you had a copy of your ballot on top. And you also have a copy of the slides for each of these items. Mayor and Council, in the interest of time, since we officially are supposed to end at four thirty. I was not going to go through each of these individually, since you have its documents to take with you, unless you would like for us to go through them individually.
So this, these eleven. Are not. Automatically part of the capital budget assumptions for twenty twenty-four.
That's correct.
So I guess over the next week, if we're, if there's something on twenty twenty-four's capital budget assumptions. That nobody likes, we can kill and slide that money over.
Correct, you would go.
This is not just reviewing these eleven, this is reviewing the previous two pages. Just to get a.
Right, and and we've had discussion as to whether some. Uh, of the ballot items might. More appropriately be slided into assumed items.
Could potentially be.
Well, I mean, anything the council wants.
That's right, that's why I say.
Um. Okay. Well, I think we ought to. I mean, I, this is gonna all require more time than we probably have today.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the maintenance on artificial turf? Is that less than, I mean, just?
It is time you factor in the. All of the fertilizer, the aeration, the re-sodding, the lawn maintenance, but we can get you the exact number on that. So moving forward, my request from you all would be to please return your capital ballot to Caroline by next Tuesday, May ninth. If there are questions, we've made a list of all the questions that have come up today. We're gonna get that information out to you all hopefully by the end of this week. But if there are other questions that you would like for us to address in workshop two, which will be at your next council meeting on May sixteen. Please let me know that as soon as possible.
So I have one, if I may.
Sure.
So we, you you budgeted in, let me see, seven point four million for the pavement management program. Which I think is what we spent this year.
We did six and a half plus L-Meg, and that's what this number represents as well. It's a projection on L-Meg plus our six and a half to containment.
Okay, so one of the things we've always done is. Every couple of years, we do a survey of our pavement. Get a sense of what the, you know, the overall city's grading.
Yeah, ranking.
Okay. And so are we, when are we doing that? And because that can inform whether we need to spend seven point four or six point two or. Eight point nine. In the past, it has been, the city wants an average of it, whatever the number is, seventy. Okay.
Marty, would you? I'm sorry, Councilman.
Marty, you know what I'm talking about here. Yes, sir. Councilman, this is the last year of our three-year cycle with the PCI assessment, so FY twenty-four, we did that last year. We will conduct. Within FY twenty-four as well. The PCI assessment for the next. Okay, so this is based on the PCI that's two years old, or?
Yes.
It's gonna be, okay.
Whatever, three?
Every three.
Hmm, okay.
Right, and I I am interested in seeing how. Our budget assumptions line up to our five-year update um work plans, like some of these items. Some of them have been, obviously, they've been done, but some of them haven't been addressed.
You mean the five-year CIP?
Um, no, the the work plans in our five-year update comprehensive plan.
Oh, the comp plan.
Yeah, the comp plan.
I did not understand.
Or, you know, some of the items that have twenty-three and twenty-four. Are we addressing those or pushing them back?
Okay.
I just like to have an idea. With respect to the decisions we're making.
Yes, ma'am.
Even, uh, so this was largely a baseline plus presentation tonight.
Sir.
Uh, which is, I don't know, there's many, many other ways you could have done something in two hours, which shouldn't. Um, is there anything in this budget that you are cutting? Is there uh, is there? Other cuts anywhere or is it all uh base plus, base or base plus?
Kind of think, there's no major cuts. We've made some tweaks within operations. Um, but we're not doing any.
No, there's, there's no staff reductions anywhere.
In fact, we're adding.
No, no, I I saw that. See, everything's either base or base plus, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So I have a question. How do you want to handle, since we're not gonna go over this, if we have questions on this, who do we send them to?
Send them to me and we'll get them staffed out and get you some answers.
Awesome. So you've uh decided that six point nine million is available for this?
It is our estimate as of now, so if there are changes where you want to move something off of a planning assumption to a ballot, that number may change.
Well, but I get it, thank you.
Okay.
The the point of this is, uh, we talked about a uh, a mid-year adjustment. Where we had quite a bit of money unspent.
We had three million at the end of the last year. We didn't have the numbers that we have traditionally had.
Well, I thought we saw in January or February, I thought we saw a mid-year review and there was some extra money there that we hadn't. Figured out, because we were afraid we were gonna lose this, lost.
It was three point eight million.
Okay.
At the.
And you've now rolled that in?
Yes, sir.
So that's all part of all this?
Yes, sir.
Do we have someone from the Commission on the Holocaust come to our meeting and give us an update on their fundraising efforts and how, what's gone on with them? Any other questions?
All right, well, I do have one other question. On here, we've got two hundred thousand dollars for EVs. Or a hundred thousand dollars for EVs. Lately, there's been a lot of talk about what's happening with these EVs and the useful, at the end of the useful life. Uh, how are they being disposed of? How are these? Batteries being disposed of and the cost of the new batteries and stuff like that? Have we taken any of that into consideration? Before we start putting a lot of money into electric vehicles that. Are gonna become a. A unintended consequence.
Yes, sir. In fact, our CIP, our five-year CIP had called for additional money to go towards our electric vehicle initiative. But I reduced that because of those very considerations and concerns. We just learned last week, we currently have two boats in our fleet. Shepherd Lake has discontinued though.
Right.
We have a Ford Mustang in our fleet, which is heavily utilized by our staff. It's one of our full vehicles there. So we're still in a. A cautious mode with this. We're not investing as much as we had put in our five-year CIP. We can certainly reduce it further if you all would.
Well, it it's just because of all the concerns that are out there right now that are actually coming to light now.
Yes, sir.
About the cost of the batteries, how you dispose of the batteries, how you. Dis- dispose of these vehicles. The resale value on them is so incredibly low because nobody wants to. Buy the batteries.
Right.
And so that's why I was just wondering if we had. Taken that all into consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Andy just reminded me, because I've been talking about electric bikes.
P D actually did not include that as a request this year, but I will talk to them and see if they would like to add them. We were actually hopeful we would be able to get some donated.
I was trying to take the chief on a ride, but I haven't been able to set that up yet. He's never been on electric bikes, so.
We have three already.
You're talking about motorcycles. You mean the electric motorcycles.
I'm talking about bicycles.
Okay.
Select by. Basically, it's self-propelled.
Yeah, even can you also put on the list for a work, work session, a briefing on the Police Foundation?
Um, the qualified foundation?
Yeah, so we can know a little bit more about that and what the potential. Um, opportunities are for contributions and uses and. Guidelines for that.
Okay.
I mean, this, this could be. An example of an item that the foundation could. Jump in and buy pretty quickly, people want to.
And have we started, have we started a new Sandy, then we'll, remember the old Sandy Springs Foundation, which we gave money to, left? Have we started a new Sandy Springs Sound Foundation so that people who make contributions for things like Veterans Park and. And such, he can give it to a five oh one C three?
We, we started working on the Police Foundation. Next is. We're constituting. Some form of foundation. We're gonna need that when we, we talk about the Development Director.
Right.
We're gonna need that, so that's already, that's in the works.
It's in, it's in the least thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
We need to move a drummer.
Yeah, this is not official, need on. We had to notice it, but now we go to dinner and then we go to Fisher.
Right.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steph. Great job, guys. Thank you.